I just don't like sitting down to stand with everybody. Especially in the face of...
So, are we all done?
No, every two months I go back and...
Oh, every two months?
Yeah.
That's just to make sure it's cleared up or...
For two years.
Okay, alright. And that's just every, every three months.
And then I'm on me down for about two weeks.
Oh.
No, no, I mean, I'm officially in the mission.
Okay, so before you get to my horses and stuff, go play in the dirt, just remind you.
One second, one second. One second, my straighten out. I do one goal a day. That's more.
I'm just working on it, still have the issue, so.
One time he says, can I say...
I mean, until you go through, you don't, you can't realize how much it takes.
How's it going, Cory?
Very good, Mayor, how are you?
I'm hanging in, but...
Good.
It's really bad.
How's business?
Busy.
I see, I see you're...
I saw you, we saw you driving the other day.
Yes, you know it's busy when I'm driving.
Yeah. It's okay.
Yes.
What else could we...
That's actually a relaxing time.
You get out of your office.
Yes, exactly.
I understand.
Anyway, we got six o'clock.
Ready? Mr. Best. Please, please be seated, or you can stand up, never mind.
It's, it's a challenge over here.
Whatever you want, yeah, it is. I'd like to ca...
Yep.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Please be seated. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
You certainly may, that's not my mic, is it?
Well, I moved mine.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Croft.
Here, thank you. Thank you very much. Let's start with introduction, presentations, and proclamations. The first proclamation is the proclamation declaring April 2nd, 2019 as National Service Recognition Day, sponsored by the, by Arizona Service. Would you please join me up front with the proclamation? We have a microphone. Could you introduce yourself, so everybody will know who you are?
My name i... My aunt? My name is Patty Kardashian, I work with Yavapai Regional Transit, and I'm an AmeriCorps state member.
My name is Maureen Owen, I'm an AmeriCorps state member, serving horses with heart.
Proclamation, the National Service Recognition Day, April 2nd, 2019. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of American character and central to how we meet our challenges, nation cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants agree that the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opiate epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veteran and military families, and whereas the national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas the AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our community and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas the national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests into community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayers' dollars. And whereas the national service positions participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders throughout the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 2nd, 2019. Now therefore, I, Darryl Croft, Mayor of Chino Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2019 as National Service Recreation Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national services in our community, and to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Congratulations, thank you very much for what you do. You tell us a little bit more.
On behalf of the Serv of Prescott College and AmeriCorps members throughout the county, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you, Mayor Croft, for recognizing April 2nd as National Service Recognition Day in Chino Valley.
Without the support and acknowledgement of elected officials, the service that AmeriCorps members provide for the community would go unnoticed. Arizona Serv currently supports 28 Americors and Vista members throughout Yavapai County. Four of those Americors members are serving right here in Chino Valley with local organizations working on specific projects to address poverty. I, personally, I work at Yavapai Regional Transit in the office as a community outreach specialist.
I've had the honor of serving as an AmeriCorps member with Patty Kardashian. I want to thank my AmeriCorps team for their support, including our esteemed leader, Annie Wright Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor Croft and Town Council.
Thank you.
Do it again.
I didn't say nothing.
Of course.
I'm going into military now.
Danny shouldn't wear your cover inside, Mr. Mayor.
Unless you're armed.
I was in the Navy. I would ask all the military folks in the audience to please come up. Hello? Please come up. If you've been in the military and served, especially in Vietnam, I know these folks have. Now we have, we have Coast Guard, we have Navy, and Marine Co... Now we have Marine Corps, you're right, you're in the Marine. You have two Mar... Marine Corps vets, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean to cut down the Navy.
Never mind, just go to Mike, won't you?
And we are Navy.
Yes. We are.
Proclamation, the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29th, 2019. As you know, some of us that came back from Vietnam, we weren't treated very nicely here in this country, but now that's changed a lot, and thank God that our young men and women that are in the military now are treated with respect for the service that they do. National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March 29th, 2019. Whereas on March 28th, 2017, the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America in Congress assembled, added to the laws of the United States, a law that encouraged the display of the flag of the United States on National Vietnam War Volunteers Day, March 29th. And whereas on March, January 12th, 1962, Operation Chopper marked the America's first combat mission against the Vietcong and the beginning of one of the largest and most celebrate, uh, challenging wars. The Vietnam War is a story of the service members of different backgrounds, colors, and creeds who came together to compete a daunting mission. And whereas our veterans answered our country's call and served with honor, and on March 29th, 1973, the last of our troops left Vietnam. Yet in one, in one of the war's most profound tragedies, many of these men and women came home to be shunned or neglected, to face treatment undefending their courage and a welcome unworthy of their example. And whereas we reaffirm one of the most fundamental obligations, to show all who have worn the uniform of the United States the respected dignity they deserve, and to honor their sacrifice by serving them as well as they serve us. We pay tribute to the fallen, the missing, the wounded, the millions who served, and the millions more who awaited their return. We honor the Americans who served, we pay tribute to those who have laid, were laid to rest, and we affirm our dedication to showing a generation of veterans the respect and support of a grateful nation. And now therefore, I, Darryl Croft, Mayor of the town of Chino Valley, do hereby acknowledge March 29th, 2019 as National Vietnam War Veterans Day in Chino Valley, Arizona, and urge all our citizens to recognize the valerant sacrifice of our veterans, veterans, by displaying the flag of the United States. In witness thereof, I have, heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Chino Valley to be affixed as 26th day of March, 29th. Hallelujah, Vietnam.
1964, '5 and '6.
Three years and five years.
1969, 11 months.
Three years, 1967, '68, '69.
And I made a round of world cruises, spent a year.
A year. All of Vietnam from '65 to '66.
Thank you very much for your service, all of you.
Did you learn how to drive that?
Yeah, yeah.
How long to watch the copy of proclamation, we have some... Okay, call to the public. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council actions taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration, and discussion at a later date, or responding to criticism. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to the council right now? Yes, ma'am, come right on up, give, tell us your name.
It's okay.
We don't bite.
I don't know.
Much.
A couple of you, you might. I speak over here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. What was the first question you wanted me to?
Your name.
Oh, my name, my name is Andrea Ireland. I live on, at 1375 Colorado Way, and I'm here in regards to El Charro Norte's signs on our property. We've been ordered by the judge to remove our signs on April 2nd, which causes a huge problem for us, the Ireland's, and our household. Without the signs, we had no more, no less than 15 people driving to our driveway asking us if this was El Charro Norte. Yeah, it's, you know, it's kind of funny, in the beginning it was, but then it became a hazard. We're out working in our yard, people are pulling in our driveway as if they own our driveway. People drive on Colorado like there's no speed limit. They stop in the middle of the road, hollering at us, "Do you know where El Charro Norte is?" This is the time without the signs. So, now that we've been ordered to remove our signs, we're back in that hazardous situation. Without these signs, they're gonna do the same thing. People that are unfamiliar with where the restaurant is, as you may know, it's kind of back in the back area. So, you know, I, I just stress to the city council to hurry up and make a decision about the signs. Because it, our lives are in danger with these people that pull into our road, our driveway, or stop on the middle of the road, Colorado, there's hardly enough room for two cars to get by. It's gonna create an accident, and someone's gonna get hurt, or worse, killed. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We, we, we can't respond to you now, but we will. We'll have staff look at it again. There's some things that happened in the background, but we can't do, respond now, so...
Right, yes, we're, we're familiar with what's going on through Gary Denny.
Okay.
Who's?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking to us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go on to response to the public. Response to the public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how the town officials address matters raised during the call to the public in the previous meeting. There were comments last meeting about the town establishing a pickleball court at one of the town parks. And this request was forwarded to the town parks and rec staff to research the level of interest in pickleball, the possible location, the cost to implement the program, and possible funding sources. If feasible, this item would be included with many other funding requests for consideration by staff and council in developing the upcoming budget. Okay, let's go on to item five, current events, summaries, and reports. This item is information only. The mayor and any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of the current event. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered, no action will be taken. Tomorrow, or Thursday evening at 6:00 right here, is session two of the Citizens Academy, which is an eight-week presentation of everything in town that's good. All the, this session of the academy, that, it's called the Town of Chino Valley Now. The town manager, town administration, the mayor and council, town clerk, and town community service director will present this program. So if you, anything you want to know about those offices in town, then next Thursday at 6:30 right here. Citizens Academy, and the next session will be the following week is, oh, that's the old one. Okay. If you're interested, come on down, there's plenty of room. And I couldn't hear you anyway.
She's, you said next Thursday, she was saying it's this Thursday.
Well, there's one next Thursday, too.
Yeah.
I wasn't wrong, but I wasn't...
You wanna borrow my hearing aid?
Yeah.
Sounded more like a politician all the time.
I am, huh? It's only taken seven years, eight years, man. That's not too bad. Anybody else in the council?
No, thank you. Doing good, thanks.
Anybody?
I'm good here.
I do, does anybody else want to go first? No one else?
Okay. Uh, so many of you might know, last week was a really hard week for Chino Valley in a couple different aspects. We lost two seniors at Chino Valley High School, a car accident on the 89 headed towards Paulden, Nicole and Sadie. I commend Chino Valley High School for having grief counselors on site. This has had a huge, tremendous impact on the community, the students, present and former. And I just wanted to let the families know that my thoughts are with them. So one of the downsides of, of being a small community is that these tragedies affect us all so deeply. I know I hugged my kids a few times that night. A family that recently moved here a couple of years ago, their house burnt to the ground. And they're not here in Chino, they're in Paulden, but they expressed their immense gratitude to the first responders, the fire department, for everything they did to help them out. And the community, our town, has rallied around them, and that is the upside to being such a small town. They have really rallied around them, and, and they will continue to do so, we will continue to do so. So, I love this town. Unfortunately, we had a horrible tragedy at the same time the town has come together in regards to, to the loss of Sadie and Nicole, and in support of the family that lost literally everything they owned. So that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Town Manager, do you have some things?
No, Mayor, I have nothing except for the items that we already agendized.
Okay.
So, if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce Joshua Cook, he's our new Development Services Director. Joshua, if you want to come on up and say a few words about yourself and where you came from. Appreciate it, he just started yesterday.
Fresh blood, huh?
I guess you could call me that. Um, I've been a planner for about 20 years now. I've planned for communities in Oregon, Arizona, and Kentucky. Uh, it's good to be back in Arizona, I, I love it here, I grew up here, so. Anything else you want to know about me?
Are you so excited?
I, I am excited, this is good, yeah.
Where did you grow up, in Arizona?
Uh, Tucson, Tempe, and Paradise Valley. About five years in each, actually.
I understand you're serious about stating here, you're buying a house?
Uh, yeah, we're in contract to buy a house right now, while we're currently trying to sell our house in Kentucky, so.
Buying a house here?
In Chino Valley, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if he's buying a house like in California or something.
Uh, no, that would be a long commute, and I don't have the money for that. Unless you're talking about a pay raise.
He just got here, too.
And whereabouts in Kentucky are you from?
Uh, we lived in Paris, which is about 22 miles outside of Lexington.
Okay, thank you.
Beautiful country.
It is beautiful, lots of horses, lots of grass.
Lots of horses, a lot of green.
Yeah, I won't have to mow my grass here, because I won't have any.
Yeah, smart man, yeah, alright. Thank you very much, welcome, Joshua.
I look forward to working with you all.
And I'm sure we'll see a lot of you.
Yeah, you will.
You'll get tired of us. Alright, thank you. Okay, the next one is re, report regarding road condition impacted by February snowstorm. Mr. Marbury, our Public Works Director Town Engineer, you've got some pretty pictures for us, huh?
I have some pictures. We'll decide if they're, we'll let you decide if they're pretty, so, thank you, Mayor and Council. Wanted to, to just maybe show a visual representation of some of the results of the storm, and some roads that were already in poor shape, and, and what the storm did, so the pictures might not be that pretty. So we, we, we went around and took some pictures, and this is by far not all the roads in town. It's just to try and represent some of the various areas of town. And we'll just go through them, and, and I looked at them, and, anyway, it's, it's somewhat depressing, so. Um, this is, the, we'll start off over Sunrise Subdivision, if you don't know where that is. El Charro Norte is in Sunrise Subdivision, which was spoken of earlier. So some of the roads in there, they're all, most of the roads over there are named after states. So, you look at Florida Lane, and this is a result of some of the damage from the storm. It's a, it's only like about 15% damaged. Maybe we can work on that one, but then you go down to New York Place, about 75% of the road is damaged, it's more pothole than road at this point. California Drive is close to half damage and half pavement left. Most of these roads are old Chiptown roads that we haven't been able to touch for years right now. And the snowstorm, with the resulting melt and softening and weakening of the base, has just done a number on these roads and made them even worse than they were. Uh, move over towards Chino Meadows Subdivision, just have one representation of this subdivision, Pepper Tree Place, about half the road is, is gone, and the other half is halfway damaged, so. Um, we're just not even sure what to do with some of these roads at this point. And I will say, as far as Chino Meadows, there's a lot of other portions of Chino Meadows that have damage, I just don't have pictures of them, so I'm not trying to cut any one area of the town short. Then if you come back over onto the west side of 89, closer to the, the areas where Casa Grande and Big Daddy's and some of those establishments are, the Perkinsville and Palomino areas is where that subdivision is. You get to the Angus Place and Antelope Drive, these roads were in rough shape before the storm, and the storm hasn't done them any better. Um, they're over 75% damage, and just noth, there's nothing left to attach the patching materials to. More streets over there, Campbell is one of the better streets, it's about half there. Taylor and Canfield are, are more damaged than road left. Luna Estates is another subdivision in the same area. Horizon Way, there's some apartment complexes on Horizon Way, so it gets a good amount of traffic and looks more like a dirt road. Chaparral Lane's another road over there. Again, these are supposed to be our paved roads, so this is what we're looking at these days. Some intersections around town, we got a lot of comments about one east and one south. Um, we've done our best to patch it the best we can, but again, it's more patches than, than pavement at this point. And this is one that's been commented on a lot, Road 2 North at Pepper Tree. I showed the southern end of Pepper Tree earlier. Um, this is the northern end, and one of the heaviest traveled roads in our town. This particular area is more drainage-related than, than necessarily the snowstorm, but we're starting to lose both edges on the road, and hopefully we can work on that, and I may come back to council and ask that to be prioritized for some of the flood control money to try and work on some of the side drainage on there to help that situation, but, uh, wanted to put this slide up to know we are aware of it, we're trying to look and see what we can do. But some of these fixes, particularly this one with the drainage, could be into six figures or better, we, we don't know yet, I don't want to give out exact numbers. Because we'd like to take a decent look at the situation, um, and try and get a good feel. We've, we've got some right-of-way concerns there, so a lot of what the solution is depends on how much room we have to work with. So, um, when we look at that, if you, if you want to talk a few numbers, I'm actually got this slide in the next presentation, too. When you look at repairing some of these roads, you're into the, the rehab and reconstruction numbers for these, anywhere from 50,000 a mile up to one and a half million a mile, depending on the road. So, these are not cheap fixes. So I wish I had better news, but the, the roads were in bad shape, and the snowstorm didn't do us any favors. So that's pretty much my report, I get, can I answer questions? So, any questions or...
Questions?
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, uh, to you and your staff for all the extra work that you guys put in in the overtime trying to get these roads safe for our community, thank you.
So, and, and on that note, I would like to say the staff put in a lot of overtime and worked, and is still working right now, we're now combating not only the potholes, but the weeds that are coming up. So, that's the next crisis that's coming our way, is the weeds and tumbleweeds, but, but we're doing what we can. Uh, they spent a couple days rebuilding Perkinsville from when the Watson and Willow Lakes overtopped. So we watched that through the weekend, and as soon as the water went down, the crews were on top of it and had it fixed, uh, right away, worked with PD on that as well, so that was a joint effort to try and keep that road posted and notified as much as possible. So that was how much water we've gotten recently, enough that the lakes released water again, so.
Thank you and your staff for the work you're doing. Okay. Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Duffy, did I lose him?
He just left.
I can start this one.
Okay. Presentation regarding, well, you've done that enough. May twenty-first, twenty nineteen, special election ballot questions. Mr. Marbury and then we'll have Mr. Duffy, our Finance Director.
So, after that cheery presentation I just gave, we'll start on with the presentation about the road maintenance ballot question that comes up. And we've given this presentation several times, so it might be old news for some of you, but we'll go through it again and hopefully continue on down the road, so to speak. So, this came about, if you think about the slides we had before, the Roads Committee and Council had requested to try and figure out a plan to work on these roads and how do we start taking care of these roads better than we have been doing or have the ability to do. So, with the Roads Committee, they tasked me as the Public Works Director and Town Engineer to say, okay, what do we need as far as to maintain the roads dollar-wise? And so, the first part of this presentation is how we got to that. And then they turned to Joe and said, okay, what are some ideas of how to pay for it? And we'll bring that to the voters. So, we started out, we've got a hundred and fifty-three miles of road in the town. About a third of those are arterials and collectors. And then about seventy percent of those are the residential roads. The arterials are the main roads in town that gets you from place to place. And the rural and residential roads are the ones where your driveway is on, pretty easy if you think about it that way. So, we looked at the town that way. The arterials and collectors have more traffic, so they need more maintenance, so that's why we differentiate there. This map kind of shows the roads based on material type. All the red is the chip sealed road, which is a combination of tar and gravel layers. Some of the newer roads are the blue ones. They may have chip seal on top, but underneath is hot mix asphalt that comes from the asphalt plant. The orange are gravel roads and the yellow are just good old dirt roads that don't even have gravel on them. And we've, that's how we divide up the hundred and fifty-three miles. About eighty miles are the chip seal roads, about forty are the asphalt and the rest are divided between dirt and gravel. The green line is Highway eighty-nine, that's state highway. State maintains that, town funds don't go to maintain that. So, then when we look at how to fix these roads, I just showed you this in the last presentation, but this is kind of the strategy we look at when you look at repairing roads. You want to try and hit the black line on that graph, shows how the road degrades over time. It starts slowly and then once the road gets bad enough, it starts what I call falling off the cliff and getting bad really quickly, really bad really quickly. And then it actually slows down again, because once it gets bad enough, it can't get much worse. So, from pavement management, we try and stay up in the green area because the treatment's so much cheaper. You can do repetitive treatments at a lower cost. And I tried to summarize some of the average costs for these treatments per mile in this slide for people to get an idea. You're talking eleven thousand to thirty thousand dollars per mile for just filling the cracks and a fog seal, which is only asphalt, no rock. But then if you start adding rock to it, which is some of the chip seals and scrub seals, your price doubles from that. But it's still pretty cheap per mile. You start getting into the melon overlays and the heavier rehabilitation is when you go up another factor level into the fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand per mile. And remember, our annual budget right now that we can put into this type of maintenance is about three to four hundred thousand per year. So, if you're doing a, say, a heavy melon overlay, three inches or so, you're getting a mile or less of road out of that. And if you have to rebuild, some, a road like Two North can run you a million and a half plus per mile to go down to dirt and rebuild. It's not cheap. So, that's the typical numbers we use. And again, just to reiterate, if we can keep the good roads good using the seal coats and treatments like that, you can maintain a road for about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per mile over twenty years. If you let it go to where you need overlays, you need less overlays, but they're more expensive, so you're looking at four to five times that amount over twenty years. And if you let it go to where you need to rebuild it, you've increased that factor another three or four times to the million dollar type number. So, that's when you hear engineers talk about pavement preservation and keeping the good roads good. It's because it's a lot cheaper to keep the good roads good. So, we looked at that. And when we applied those sorts of strategy over twenty years, we got arterial and collectors roads. Even though there's twice as, half as many as those, our dollar amounts are the same for those roads because you need more money into those arterial and collector roads because of the traffic levels. So, about sixteen million dollars over twenty years for our inventory system for arterials and collectors and then residential and rurals is sixteen million. And that works out, if you divide it back out by the years, it's one point six million a year is pretty much the bare minimum we can get by to maintain the road network. And right now, we're putting three to four hundred thousand out of the HERF money that we use. And so, that leaves us a shortfall of one point two. And if you want to improve that, one point five million. The ballot question was one point five million. Couple more new, couple more new slides, Joe, so... There's been a lot of questions about, well, if you get that money, what do you do with it? So, the way you decide what to do with that money is you implement a pavement management program, which is a fancy way of saying, we're going to plan out what to do with each road for the next seven years. So, we'll have develop, if this passes, we'll develop charts and graphs that show, like this map shows, three different years worth of projects on a sample type town. So, we'll list which roads are year one, year two, year three. It'll be a committee process, starting at the staff level, then reviewed by the Roads and Streets Committee and then Council will have say on it through the annual budget process. So, that capital improvement program will be part of the annual budget process and all be published in public. So, it's not just one engineer saying what's going on. And we hope to review this seven years, so you know, within a year or two, things might shift, but you can pretty much predict when your road's going to get done. And just to kind of recap, right now, the town is spending about four hundred thousand dollars of the HERF money for the program maintenance for this type of work. It gets us anywhere from three to five year, miles per year. That's a thirty to fifty year cycle where the treatments we're currently using last at most seven years. So, that's why the roads are getting worse and worse, is because we don't have time to get back to them. With the program, you're looking at one point six to one point nine million a year. That gets you fifteen to twenty miles per year in a seven year cycle so that you can actually hold on to that road condition we have and hopefully improve that when you get up to the one point nine million. And some of the feedback's been, what do we spend compared to our neighbors? Is Frank just nuts and saying we're going to spend too much money? Well, right now, if you look at the to, this is the total road budget, so it includes all of the money we spend patching potholes and everything, too. It's the total HERF money that Chino Valley spends. So, that's why it's not four hundred thousand, it's nine seventy-seven. That's the total road budget. And I went off the total road budgets of the other towns, too. Prescott's got six hundred and two miles of road, but they average about thirty-five thousand a mile for maintenance that they put in with their total road budget. Prescott Valley is about twenty thousand a mile. Again, it's simple because there's restrictions each town has for how they spend that money. Some might have so much per chip seal and so much for expansion projects, but it's kind of a number. Yavapai County has sixteen hundred miles and still spends seventeen thousand or so per mile. And right now, Chino Valley's at about six thousand per mile. If this passes, it'll put us up almost to Yavapai County. I think it'll be about sixteen thousand per mile. So, I wanted that slide in there to help show this is not an extravagant program. It's the bare minimum when you look at what other towns are doing. So, when we get to, how do we get the money? That's where Joe takes over, so...
So, Councilman Miller, he keeps adding slides and I subtract slides, just to let you know.
We'll work on him.
Yeah, we'll work on him. So, yeah, currently with our HERF funds, which is from our gas tax, we're collecting about four hundred thousand. And that number really includes about seventy-five thousand from the general fund, because we've been putting a little in from the general fund every year. This budget year, we're hoping to go from seventy-five to a hundred. And so, the Roads and Streets Committee, initially, as you know, we had two options, either levying one point two or one point five million. And the Roads and Streets Committee said, you know, let's go for the one point five million, because if we're going to do this, let's do it right. And let's have an extra three hundred thousand dollars available that we can save and roll over for a couple of years so that we can build a little capital project to do some major road improvements. Like what we've said in all the public meetings, is like Road Two North from Safeway to One West or to One East. You know, that's a million, million plus project to do that right and it's going to need a significant amount of funding. While at the same time, doing the road maintenance program that Frank prepared. So, the biggest question is how much is it going to cost you and me as citizens here in the community? Where are we going to be at? So, this is based on the two thousand eighteen assessed value. And what we did is we have six thousand nine hundred and one properties in Chino Valley. Thirty-five hundred of them are residential, owner residential properties, and nine hundred and nine are non-primary residential. And that's generally duplexes, rental properties and all those others. So, but add those together, we got about forty-four hundred residential properties. They're going to pay the bulk of the money. And on average, those properties are assessing for about a hundred and seventeen thousand to ninety-two thousand. So, you know, if you blend that, you're a little over a hundred thousand dollars per property. Now, that's the assessed value and not the market value. And what we did is we went out, we looked at, we looked at recent home sales in two thousand eighteen for a bunch of homes scattered throughout the community. And then we went out to the county website and got their assessed value. And it turns out, the exact number was forty-nine percent, but they averaged just about fifty percent. So, when we're doing our presentations to the public, we're telling them, just take what you think your house is worth for a real quick number, figure fifty percent, it's going to be assessed at fifty percent, and then that times about a two percent tax rate. And that's going to get you pretty close to the ballpark of what it's going to cost you individually. Of course, you could go out to the county or get your assessment notice from the county and get the exact number times two percent and you're going to be really close to it, what it's going to be. So, on average, the typical residential home in Chino Valley is going to be paying between a hundred and eighty-three and two hundred and twenty-six dollars per year. One of the things that we have emphasized and we think is really important is that, is how this money is not going to be used. One, it's not going to be used for any employee salaries or wages. It's not going to be used anything for service and supplies, for office supplies, office furniture, any of that type of stuff. It's not going to be used for any overhead. We're not going to burden, in fact, the town doesn't even burden the HERF fund with any overhead on it. So, it's just purely the gas tax dollars go for the highway user or the road crews and then what's left is put on the roads. In fact, the Auditor's General's offices requires our annual auditors to issue a report to make sure that our HERF funds are used in accordance with state law. And we do that every year. And so, we're going to do the same thing, have our auditors expand their scope of their audit and audit these funds to make sure they were used in accordance with the ballot measure. And they'll issue a report to Council, just like they do with the HERF report every year. We're also going to do, we're going to post exactly how the money was spent on the website. And I envision that being about a one-page report because we're going to use contractors for the majority of this work and we'll probably let out two or three contracts, depending on the type of work that's being done. And I can see us, you know, Contractor A, B, and C, and let's say five hundred thousand each. We pay each contractor five hundred thousand. And here's the roads that we did with that money every year. So, we'll be completely transparent, be able to show the community exactly where the money's gone and where it's been spent. We'll show how much came in, how much we spent, how much we had left over. And then the next year, we'll do the same thing, time and time again. So, we've had quite a few comments, oh, but you can take that money and put it over here and use it for some else. It's like, nope, it's going to stay there. The ballot says this is where it has to be spent, used on, and that's where it'll be used on. So, and the program, the last thing is the program will expire in twenty years. So, like give us essentially, we'll be able to do it three times, three cycles is our goal. And about eighteen years from now, there'll be a Finance Director and a Public Works Director standing up here saying, hmm, should we send this tax or not?
Questions?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it, thanks Frank, appreciate it. Okay, let's go on to the Consent Agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any Council member may request to remove an item from the Consent Agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anyone want to move anything? I need a motion there.
I make a motion, we approve Consent Agenda Item Six A.
Second? Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Let's go on to Item Seven, Action Items. The Council may vote to recess the public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, eight three for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public and no action may be taken in the executive session. Let me go on and read Item A. Consideration and Possible Action to Approve Ordinance Number Twenty-Nineteen Eight Sixty-Six to Rezone. Twelve point three five acres, approximately fifty-three, five hundred and thirty-five, seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet of real property located point two five miles east of southeast corner of North Road One West and West Road Four North at six eighty-three West Road Four North. Assessors' Partial Number Three Oh Six One Four Zero Zero Three S from SR One, Single Family Residential, One Acre Minimum Zoning District to CL Commercial Light Zoning District to Allow a Wholesale Nursery. Owner of Record, Donald P. Cox and Catherine Cox. Mr. Lerner?
Mayor, can you read Action Item B as well? I'm going to be presenting these two items concurrently.
Do B? How about the recommendation? Or just B?
Just B.
B, Consideration, Possible Action to Approve a Conditional Use Permit. CUP Eighteen Zero Zero Six for twelve point three five acres, approximately five hundred and thirty-five, seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet of real property located approximately point two five miles east of the southeast corner of North Road One West and West Road Four North at six eighty-three West Road Four North. Assessors' Partial Number Three Oh Six Fourteen Zero Zero Three S to Allow the Existing Single Family Residential Use Within the CL Commercial Light Zoning. Owner of Record, Donald K. Cox and Catherine Cox. Mr. Lerner, again.
Thank you, Mayor, by the way, Council. I'm going to present these two items as one presentation that will be two separate action items. As I said before, the subject property is located at a quarter of a mile east of the southeast corner of North Road One West and West Road Four North at six eight three West Road Four North. The subject property is surrounded by area conforming of low to medium density residential with commercial property of about Interstate Route Eighty-Nine. As you can see here, there's a, to the west of the subject property, there's single family residence and to the southwest is a subdivision named Appaloosa Meadows. The property is located through Road Four North, along this road here. Improvements to the property include a single family residence and an accessory structure. It's just a zoning map, so Council can clearly see the land uses, the zoning classifications surrounding the subject property. We have, I said it before, the subject property is zone, single family residential, one acre minimum. The property to the east is commercial light. And those properties of about Interstate Route Eighty-Nine are either commercial light and commercial heavy. To the west, we have high... To the west, we have a high density, I mean, medium density to lower density residential. The Cox's have applied and, and have requested. A conditional use permit and a, a zone change in the conditional use permit for the subject property. And the Cox's have been in the, uh, plant and tree wholesale landscaping businesses in nineteen ninety-one. The Cox's also own the property to the, to the east of the subject property where they currently have a, a wholesale landscaping business there. Property owners surrounding the property received, uh, within a three hundred foot radius, received notification of the property owner's intent for, for request for a zone change in the conditional use permit. Those residents, uh, the count was eight, residents received actual notices. For those eight, uh, notices, uh, staff received the one response from the neighbor directly to the west. This neighbor here, uh, he spoke to staff and said that he was opposed to the Mrs. Cox's, uh, request for a zone change. He stated that by locating commercial property next to his property, that would decrease the value of his property. And he didn't want, um. Additional traffic generated by the commercial, uh, use that was gonna be located on property. He did state that if council went forward and approved Mrs. Cox's, uh, request, that he will request. That the property owner put a privacy fence or some type of barrier to decrease the impact that his residents will have. Neighborhood was conducted, the neighborhood meeting was conducted on April fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. At same meeting, there were four residents. Those residents, uh, either reside along Four North or within Appaloosa Meadows. Uh, those residents also brought some issues regarding Mrs. Cox's request. One resident stated that. Whatever type of business that Mrs. Cox was gonna locate there, again, was gonna increase the, the traffic that's already there. And another resident stated that by rezoning this property, it would contribute to a, to a pattern. Meaning that by zoning her property, then the next resident would rezon his property to commercial and so forth. Until we see a commercial strip along, uh, One West. The planning and zoning meeting was conducted in November sixth, two thousand and eighteen at same meeting. Again, uh, residents brought up the same issues. One of the commissioners had a question regarding Mrs. Cox's request. Why was she rezoning or requesting a commercial light zoning district? He believed that the AR five zoning district will allow the same type of use. Staff was not in agreeance with that. Mrs. Cox not only wants to use her property as a wholesale nursery, but in the near future wants to open it up for, uh, outside retail. In order to do that, uh, the property will need the commercial light zoning district. And we see in the permitted uses within the commercial zoning, the permitted uses within the commercial light zoning district. Uh, it states, uh, wholesale, uh, outside sales of tree nursery and wholesale is, is a word that, that I believe it, it stated. In order for her to go forward with that type of use, she will need the commercial light zoning district. Other, uh, public comments, uh, that, that were, uh, brought up during that, uh, planning and zoning meeting were. The risk factor of future uses within the commercial light zoning district. Meaning that, let's say, uh, the applicant ten years down the line decides to sell a property. They no longer have that assurance that it's gonna be a nursery, but could be anything permitted within the commercial light zoning district. Planning and zoning commission continued the item. Uh, they requested that staff do a little bit more research about what limitations the staff could put on the use of this property. Meaning that if, uh, staff could eliminate some of the uses that were more of a higher impact within the permitted uses in the commercial light zoning district. From staff researcher, was determined that staff cannot put limitations on the uses that are already permitted within the commercial light zoning district. Or the uniform law is what, what we recognize it as. On December fourth, uh, the item was again, was continued before, uh, planning and zoning commission. At that point, the same issues were brought up by the, by the, by the surrounding property owners. Again, uh, increase of traffic and that, that they didn't, they didn't have any assurance. That down the line, there's would be some other type of use within the commercial light zoning district. Planning and zoning recommended, that the, uh, planning and zoning recommended that council, uh, deny. The request of the, of the zone change, uh, the vote was three to four. And because that was denied, they also denied the conditional use permit. That was five to two. A little bit more about the conditional use permit, why are they asking for the conditional use permit? Along with the, with the, with the zone change. The, the property currently has a, a, a single-family residence. If the council pursued forward and, and recommended or, or adopted this ordinance, this house would be considered legal, not conforming. Commercial light zoning district allows single-family residence only with a conditional use permit. With the approval of the conditional use permit, this residence will become in conformance with the, within the, uh, commercial light zoning district. This house is being used for a foreman. Besides this house, the applicant, uh, in the future wants to locate another home. With that desire, the staff has recommended a few conditions of approval. If, uh, if council pursues forward to approve this conditional use permit. Uh, one of those conditions is that no more than two resident, residential structures be allowed within the property. And that the second residence would be limited to twelve hundred square feet. Basically the same limitations that are put within the ag zoning district. Here's a conceptual site plan that was submitted by the, by the applicant. The site will look very similar in nature to the, uh, adjacent site that they own to the east of the subject property. As we see here, they've done their best to, um, buffer the property completely with, uh, both trees and shrubs. Which will mitigate the impact that it will have on surrounding properties. Again, if, if any of the council members has driven by their current site, it's completely surrounded or buffered by trees and shrubs. This is gonna look the same. So. As far as the land use designation on this property, uh, the general plan land use designation shows that as. Commercial slash multifamily residential, which is, uh, in conformance with a commercial light zoning district. As you see here, this is one of the, the exhibits that I brought up to the residents. Or specifically the resident that stated that this was just initiated a pattern of commercial properties. All along, uh, the intersection over here, and, and that's basically impossible when it's the general plan. That these, that this area is, uh, medium density residential. In order for a property owner to come in and, and wanting, and wanting to rezon the property to commercial first. They gotta go through the general plan amendment and try to amend the general plan before they get their, their commercial, uh, use. Staff, uh. Staff, uh, recommends that plan, that, uh, council, um, adopt. Adopt ordinance two zero nine, two zero nineteen dash eight six six to rezon the property. From single-family residential to commercial light. There's another slide I, I wanted to show here, going a little bit back. These are the active business licenses that we have for plant nurseries. And we have four active business permits or business license. Mrs. Cox's current tree nursery on Four North. We have Earthworks here on State Route eighty-nine. We have Prescott Valley Growers. And we have Bondi Plants further down here. This is Prescott Valley Growers by Development Service Building. As we, if we see here, we see that, uh, Chino Nursery, the current zoning district on that is commercial light. Earthworks, commercial heavy. Uh, Prescott Valley Growers is commercial light. And the last one, Bondi Plants, is within the AR five zoning district. Uh, the Bondi Plants, all their growth is done within the greenhouse, within an enclosed structure. That's why they're allowed to have the AR five zoning district. And this is the way that, this exhibit just shows a way that staff has treated these type of uses in the past. That if you're gonna do some type of retail, outside retail, you're gonna need, there was some type of commercial zoning district on it. And that's the, the way that staff directed the applicant, that they were gonna need that commercial light zoning district in order to pursue forward with, with their desire. And again, we brought, we brought this up before about the conditional use permit. Why is it needed? Because there's already a current residence there, is being occupied by the foreman that works on the adjacent property. And, uh, that's to make the, the, the residence into conformance within the commercial light zoning district. And, uh, if there's a future residence, we're gonna limit it to, to two residents with a stipulation on the square footage of, of that. So again, planning and zoning commission recommended denial of both items. Staff is pursuing forward and still recommending approval of both items. The, the applicant's representative is here as well. He asked if he could share a few comments before we open it up to public comment.
One, one five, on the twelve thousand square foot, is that actually the twelve hundred that you said? Is that a typo?
Is that a typo?
No, we are limiting it, the, the, the guest residence or the second residence on the property. If the council was to go forward, we're making that recommendation that they keep the second residence, uh, within twelve hundred square feet.
See, that's twelve thousand.
Says twelve thousand on there.
I'm just saying it's a typo.
Alright, thank you.
That's a big residence.
The conditional use permit later, we'll say twelve hundred, sorry about that.
Can you speak for?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ralph Pugh from Mesa. Pleasure to be in Chino Valley tonight and thank you for a few minutes to share a couple of thoughts with you. I'm here on behalf of Catherine Cox and her son Jim, the owners of Prescott Valley Growers. And, um, Mr. Lerma has given a factually accurate and wonderful presentation tonight. And I certainly don't intend to bore you any, uh, tonight. So all those facts we agree with, we support the staff's recommendation. I'd just like to share a couple of thoughts with you about why this is a meritorious request. As you can see from the general plan category and designation here, this is already designated for commercial and multifamily purposes. The irony is the existing zoning on the site, the SR one, is in reality inconsistent with the general plan. That's really not unusual, that happens from time to time as you do long-range planning. But in, in reality, what we would like to do and what Mrs. Cox would like to do is to change the designation here to the commercial light. So that she can run the nursery and have those outdoor retail sales as a part of it. Um, so it is consistent completely with the general plan. We are also consistent with the other nurseries in the town, as Mr. Lerma mentioned to you. And one of the interesting things that we'll be consistent with is the existing nursery to the east. If you've driven by it, it's meticulous, absolutely remarkable. Um, whoever was in the Navy here tonight, it's gotta be like one of your ships you were on. I mean, everything was in its place and it looks really nice. That's the quality, uh, that you will get here. The second question that I'd like to, uh, address for you for just a minute is, will this set a precedent? And I think Mr. Lerma clarified that very well. I think some of the neighbors that might have had a concern about that, um, either don't recognize or don't trust the general plan process. Because as you look to the west, it's all medium density residential. And the, the, the opportunity to expand commercial there would be extremely unusual and would take a, uh, amendment to your general plan. So, uh, very remote possibility of that happening. The next thought then becomes, um, how is this positive for the town? Well, it expands a very well-run and reputable business. I'm sure the, the retail sales will produce, uh, benefit to the town. And it's in the right spot, it's on the edge of your general plan category. The real issue, I think, for those that appeared at P and Z meeting, was the uncertainty of what might happen. If either the nursery doesn't develop and you rezon it commercial light. Or the nursery develops and then goes away in a few years. Well, the truth of the matter is, your zoning code is just like virtually every other municipal code. You have a really good tool in your planning, uh, box, for lack of a better word here, called site plan review and approval. And I thought I'd just share with you briefly a couple of the, of the words that come from your code. So imagine that Mrs. Cox, you, you approve commercial light and she goes away, doesn't wanna do it anymore, quits, wants to sell it to someone else for a commercial use. That group or individual entity would have to come ultimately to the staff for review of a site plan. And the guiding principles are, is it safe? Is it attractive? Is it compatible with development in the town? And is it consistent with the public health and welfare of the area? It even goes on to say that the use cannot be detrimental to persons residing or living in the area. Parking, building configuration, landscaping, all those issues will be handled on a staff basis if that were to occur. To make sure that whatever's built on this site is not injurious or inimical to those property owners to the west, in fairness to them. So this is a common issue, uh, council members. There always is a line in general plans in municipalities and counties. That separates at some point, commercial uses from residential. And, and in this instance, you've driven, you've drawn the line in your, uh, two thousand fourteen general plan in the correct spot, clearly. The, you all approved it, the voters approved it. And we would urge you tonight to move forward and approve, uh, this wonderful business coming into town, knowing that there are protections in place. Uh, in the event the use changes. We urge you to support and, and vote for approval of the conditional use permit. We agree with the conditions and thanks for the clarification. I saw the same thing on the, on the exhibit, uh, so only two residences and, and this second one is limited to twelve hundred square feet. In that regard, as a council, you, you need to look at it according to the findings in your code. And to determine that it won't be detriment, detrimental to people in the area, it's consistent with the neighborhood. I think both of those are clear, this neighborhood is large lot acre residential. Here you'll have a couple of homes on twelve acres, that'd be very consistent. And finally, um, is it compatible with the uses in the area? And we urge you to find that. I had a chance to drive by today, I know I'm not up here and I don't live within this beautiful, cool community. But, uh, it, it seems to be consistent in all respects. So we concur tonight with the staff recommendations and conditions. We believe we're consistent with the general plan and that you as a council should move forward and implement that general plan for the benefit of the town. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your attention and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay. Yes. Uh, I'd like to have. Alex back again. Uh, it says here, uphold planning and zoning commission's recommendation to deny ordinance nineteen eight sixty-six rezoning. Why, why did P and Z deny that? What was the discussion?
Again, for the same issue that was brought up by the neighbors, that the risk that it, that involves in the future of what. The, the impact that, that these type of other uses that, that are in the commercial light zoning district might have on residents. For instance, a perfect example is a gas station. Is it permitted use within the commercial light zoning district? These residents say, they don't want a gas station.
Okay, thank you.
But, but just to clarify, I mean, uh, the gentleman made a really good point. Uh, if the tree nursery leaves five years from now, new developer has, that comes in, he has to go through a site plan approval. We're gonna look at what type of, uh, design standards they're, they're using to mitigate their impact.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to the council this side.
Thank you, can you pull up the site plan again, please? Okay, uh, my question is, are they gonna be sharing a shared driveway or the entrance gonna be off of Four North? Okay, uh my question is, are they gonna be sharing a shared driveway or the entrance gonna be off of four north, a secondary entrance?
I believe that, that, tha- tha- this property has their, is gonna have their own entrance, right there, through here, through four north. Right.
And the plants and trees that are being grown, that, that is satisfactory with planning and zoning instead of the privacy fence slash wall?
We believe that, that, that the landscaping should be, should be sufficient with, with the type of, with the type of impact that there, that uh, that does, that this site is uh, is providing. Uh that the, the plan is for Mrs. Cox to initially use this as a wholesale nursery, meaning that it's not gonna be opened up to the public. Uh once orders are, are taken, fine material is gonna be shipped out of here. At the point where they open it up to retail, then they're gonna have to come through staff, and we're gonna ask improvements, for instance, parking spaces, and at that point we'll ask for additional uh design standards for mitigation.
Anything else?
I'll wait for discussion.
Corey?
Uh Planning and Zoning, it looks like they pretty much had a split vote with just a one deciding, so they were kinda on the fences. Is that correct?
That's right, Commissioner Mendoza. At, at the point, the, the, the first motion was for the, for the zone change, and, and that was like, like you sought for this three. With a conditional use permit, I mean, if they denied the, the zone change, why approve a conditional use permit? It doesn't make sense. So that, why that vote's a little bit lopsided.
The other question is, the, on the uh on the AR five zoning that they were offered, um.
That, let me clarify that.
Okay.
They were not offered that zoning district. That was uh Planning and Zoning Commissioner stating, why did you not offer this type of zoning? We explained exactly why. He kept pushing for it. But from past history or the way staff has dealt with these type of uses, and from our findings, we concluded that the commercialized zoning district was a better fit.
Why?
As explained before, uh because of her desire to open it up to outside retail in the near future. We don't wanna have the instance where we never looked at it in the AR five zoning district, in, in, if it made sense. We've always looked at it as, does a commercialized zoning district make sense? Because that's the application that we received, and that was what was requested. Because in the future, she wants to open it up to commercial retail, or outside retail, sorry. We're trying to um avoid her coming back and trying to get a, a different type of zoning when that decision is made. We're trying to fix it right now.
I just remember from, from when we went through the agribusiness uh vetting, I know, sorry. The products that were sold, that were grown on in AR zoning could actually be sold retail, could be sold retail. But I guess that's probably not even in the discussion for, for tonight's. It's not, it's not in front of me, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna drop that. I would encourage that, if this does go, that the, the sooner we can actually start selling retail, then the town is gonna benefit from the tax base of it. Because actually, to, to grow things and, you know, send them somewhere else, another community gets the sales tax. I just don't see us getting it here. That's all I got.
I'm good. I observed the first uh property that is existing now, as they built it, developed it meticulous, and I watched it every day as I came and went up and down the road, and they've done a very nice job on getting it, the visual, you know, not being able to see into the area. So that's what I got to say. They did a nice job on the first one.
Well, I understand the concerns of the neighbors uh with retail activity. Uh but with our uh, y- you know, as you could see in the map, this piece of property is in that area for the, of commercial. Um I would, eh eh here again, in, in just looking at the neighbors and what we could do for them, I understand the way the uh access all the way around the property is looped so that they can work the property. If and when the time comes that it becomes a commercial, I think it would be really nice for planning and, or for uh Development Services to look at bringing the main roadway in on the east side of this property toward the middle of the two, and the parking the same as to not affect the people to the west as much as possible.
I turned it down. So to understand, I know you've said this ten times, you're probably tired of it. The main problem, why it didn't pass, was because of the future development or change.
The future risk, yeah.
Now, I, I really have a problem overturning um committees' decisions, 'cause that's their job, you know, and, and I understand, though, we still have to monitor them. It would be nice to uh have a little more information from the commission to, that we could read over, you know, maybe in the future. I don't know if that's a proper procedure, maybe I'm overstepping my bounds, but it'd be nice to know, especially when there's a diversity with the staff saying yes, but the commission saying no. You know what I mean? So we can, the pros and cons. That's all I got.
If it, you, the vote, though, was a split vote.
Yeah, I seen that.
It wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't all one-sided.
Not gonna completely override a no.
I understand what you're saying. I do understand. But it would be nice to see in the, in the notes what the conflict was.
We have a commissioner here, if you wanna hear from him, and if he's willing to speak. We have two of them. We have commissioners here.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Can't do it? Attorney says no.
Can't do that.
Okay. It's been through them, and they've done what they're gonna do, and we're done. Thank you, attorney.
Mayor, if I could bring up one of the, the one part that I'm, I'm not too on board with is the second residence. To me, if you want it to be commercial light, then, you know, live with the decision and to, to try to squeak in another residence in there. I, I'm kinda leaning against the um, the CUP portion of this.
So Commissioner Mendoza, that would just be for the second residence, right?
Yes.
Correct. For the, for the current residence.
The CUP for the one that's already existing, but to start adding more um.
It's understandable.
Okay.
Understandable, but no answer?
This is very confusing. So let's look at item A and, and like a motion on item A.
Which one?
One. In fact, I'll.
What do you mean, which one?
Well, there's two.
There's two.
Make me their approver deny.
I and item, or one and item number two. Do you want me to make a motion on number one?
Number one.
Okay.
Of course. Then we're gonna add the number two portion.
Alrighty. Make a recommendation that we adopt ordinance number two zero one nine dash eight six six rezoning twelve point three five acres of real property from SR one, single-family residential, one acre minimum, zoning district to CL, commercial light zoning district, per staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say, let's take a, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick clarification, that the ordinance has the same twelve thousand versus twelve hundred number in it, so the motion is for with twelve hundred square feet as limitation on the residence?
Okay. Got that?
No, say that again, I'm sorry.
Oh, say that again.
Has twelve thousand.
Where do you start, Mayor?
The ordinance for rezoning has the same condition in it for the size of the second residence. And so it will need to be, the ordinance adopted with that modification from twelve thousand to twelve hundred.
Okay.
I thought the, the, that was actually in the second, the second seven B, not on seven A.
Okay, either A or B is the same ordinance.
Same ordinance. So we need, we need to make sure that the ordinance stipulation is corrected.
So we can correct that, but do we do these separately or together?
They have to be done together, it's in the same ordinance.
Is that correct? And that's a definite maybe.
If, if, if you do the first, if you do the first one and, and it's a yay, then it's done. I mean, it's either one way or the other. Well, the CUP.
Let's listen to our attorney.
Is it okay to be confused right now?
Yeah, well, yeah, we're all confused.
The, the rezoning.
If we vote to agree to item A, then we also vote to agree to item B, but we need to do those separately. Thumbs up.
Any motion that includes approval of the ordinance also needs to include modification of stipulation two on the ordinance, that is, the stipulation requiring that the residence be limited no more than twelve thousand square feet.
Twelve hundred, twelve hundred.
And in the ordinance, it currently says twelve thousand.
We have to change it.
So we wanna make sure that the motion on the ordinance is for twelve hundred, not twelve thousand.
So do we do, do we do A and B at the same time or separately? That's my question.
Andrew, I think that, I, Andrew, I think that needs to be completely eliminated from the ordinance that the, that has nothing to do with the ordinance, that has to do with the conditional use permit.
Okay, but it's in the ordinance right now. So to whatever it is that we're doing with the ordinance, if you're going to adopt it, please tell us which modifications we're to make to the adopted ordinance.
I'm with you now, Andy.
So the ordinance needs to be amended to say twelve hundred square feet instead of twelve thousand.
I understand what you say, but we wanna make sure that we do it right, so.
One second, ma'am, I'm looking for the.
Okay.
Number two.
So. Now we're back into more discussion because if, if we're gonna do this, are we allowing the two residentials? Are we, are we holding it to the one residential like Mr. Mendoza requested? Do you, do you understand my question?
Yeah, and actually, Mayor and members of the council, the two stipulations that are in section two of the ordinance shouldn't be there for the rezoning, there are the conditions on the conditional use permit. And so this ordinance needs to be amended to remove those regardless. So when we move the conditional use permit, we can talk about the size of the structure, but the ordinance rezoning it does not have those same conditions, and should not have those same conditions.
Okay.
So you strike everything that's in section two that is.
In other words, we're gonna send this back and let them get it right before we vote on it.
I agree with that.
Let's do that. Let's get this thing right, bring it back next meeting, and we'll vote on it. We're not gonna vote on it the way it is. That's a motion. We, we wanna get it right. We don't wanna get it.
Well, can we, can we not? Can we make that adjustment right now?
You, you can, and you actually have a motion on the floor that you need to deal with as well. So right now you have a motion to approve the ordinance as it was presented.
Okay, so.
So we need to deny that? Well, we need to, we need to back out of that?
Yes.
Or someone can amend the motion to remove those two conditions.
Let's amend the motion.
Okay. So to amend the motion to remove all the residential requirements, does that work?
Language?
So the original maker of the motion is withdrawing the original motion. I, I imagine the second is agreeing to that, that the new motion is to approve the amendment, approve the ordinance, and deleting condition, stipulations one and two from section two of the ordinance.
Gotcha. One and two. Okay.
Alright.
So right now I'll make a motion that we end the last motion.
Withdraw the last motion.
Withdraw.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Now let's go on with the correct.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight six six rezoning two point three five real.
Twelve.
Twelve point three, five acres of real property from SR one, single-family resident, one acre minimum zoning to district to CL, commercial light zoning district, per staff recommendations, and deleting sections one and two.
Is that right?
Stipulations one and two, sorry.
Is that correct? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Is that all of it? Those, we got both of them now?
No, no.
No, we still.
We removed the stipulation for the housing.
Okay, let's go to B. Consideration of Possible Action. Well, I've already read that, haven't you?
Yeah.
Let's go. Let's get a motion for B.
Now, can this go as written? Do we have to do the stipulations again?
Still gotta change the twelve thousand to twelve hundred.
Twelve thousand to twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Okay, I approve, I approve. I make a motion, we approve conditional use permit. CUP eighteen dash zero zero six for Arizona parcel number three oh six one four zero zero three S to allow the existing single-family residents used within commercial light zoning district with conditions recommended by staff amending twelve thousand square feet to twelve hundred square feet.
Second.
Alright, did I do wrong?
Okay, are we ready? Is that correct?
We can have discussion, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's discuss.
I'm, I'm okay with allowing the conditional use for the existing residents, but not to add additional residences.
For what reason?
Because it, this is commercial light now. You know, you're now, we're they, they have a residence in commercial light, you know. To add more than they should've kept at SR one if they wanted to have multi-residences in there.
Well, that's not under, I understand that. Okay.
Well, and there's nothing to limit this from being um from them coming back to add more housing.
Sure, I'm glad you're here tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to get a grasp on what the stipulation would be and whether.
Well, I, I think, and, and I agree with him. I think that they're asking, we wanna change this to commercial light, but we wanna be able to keep our residents on there. And Corey's saying, that's fine. I, I'm okay with that. But on commercial light, you typically can't build residences. So he doesn't want to allow building a second residence on that property. He's okay to agree with the one that's already there.
Alright, Mayor, then if that's the desire, the changes to the two stipulations. In the first stipulation, it would be no more than one residential, structure will be allowed on the property, and stipulation two would be deleted. Okay.
Let's listen to Mr. Cook here.
I'm sorry to interject. Um I wasn't at the planning commission meeting, so I do not have all the facts. But if that single residence that's already existing, if it's considered the caretaker home, it doesn't even need a conditional use permit. That's underneath the permitted uses in the CL.
Uh huh.
So they wouldn't even need a conditional use permit. As far as a secondary home, um it doesn't allow for a secondary home. So you have to ask, is that a primary use? Is it a secondary use, or is it an accessory use? Or is it a secondary primary use on a single property? So, so there's a lot of questions that a secondary house actually brings up that I think needs to be addressed. But if they want the single residence there to act as the caretaker home for the, for the greenhouse, uh that is a permitted use in the CL, so.
So we don't even need to deal with this second one?
Right.
Correct.
Why do they want a second residence?
That's, that's correct.
I think that's a legit question.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. Sure, come on.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the answer to the question is that the, the first house is indeed a home that could be lived in, but the second one is also intended to be for caretaker use. It's not like we're using CL here and building single-family residences. This all relates to either someone living there on site and/or someone living in those houses taking care now of a twenty-acre farm. So that's really what it's for. It's not to expand single-family uses at all. That's not the intent. If that clarifies, I think there's clear there's been some concern about that.
So you're.
These are related to the operation of the business.
I'm very sorry.
No, no, it's okay. No, I'm sorry.
So you're saying you need two caretaker homes? So you're saying you need two caretaker homes on this property, is what you're saying?
Exactly, but I think Jim could probably explain that better than I could. Jim, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm Jim Cox, one of the owners, Catherine's son. Thanks for hearing us, council and mayor. Absolutely, you know, it's a farm, it's a, it's a pretty big farm, it's gonna be twice as big. And obviously, we have a need for people taking care of it. I don't want to crowd people into a housing and make it uncomfortable for people and, and just not right. So I'd like to have a second residence there to give my guys a little more space and privacy and, and just have a better, uh, quality of life while they're there working my farm. I think it's real important, I really try to take care of my help and do everything I can for them. And it's just another thing that I like to do.
I, I understand, I, I understand that with the help, but I think we're getting, we're getting out of the idea of if it's a farm, then it could be agricultural, okay? And then you've got farm help that live there and they work on the farm. We're talking about now going to a commercial piece of property, and there, it is not intended to have people living on a pe, a commercial piece of property.
Absolutely.
So a caregiver, you know, has a shotgun to keep people from stealing your stuff at night. But the idea of wanting to house your workers on a commercial piece of property i- is, I'm, I'm not go, I'm not agreeing with that.
Josh, you have something?
Yeah, sure.
I, I have.
Thank you.
Do you plan on this residence being the future retail sales of the property?
No, absolutely not.
Is it going to be set back?
It's far in the back of the property anyway. It's gonna be set back right next to where the other one, the existing one is. And we're talking two small, uh, homes here on twenty-five acres, I don't think it's like, you know, um, high density by any means. I understand that we're going with commercial, asking for commercial zoning, but there are some good reasons, I believe, we're asking for that. At the same time, we need places for some of our people to stay. I have good people, I like to keep them around, and that's one way I can keep them.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got a question, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Cook.
Mr. Cook. Are, are you allowed to have two caretaker homes, is that?
No, it, it allows for a single caretaker home. The problem with adding the second residence is you're then turning it into multifamily. It'd be like a duplex on a single lot, but then you're also adding in a commercial component. So you're, you're actually adding at that point two primary uses on a single property. And, and I don't believe that's allowed in the code. So the primary use, what is the primary use? What is the secondary use? Is the house an accessory use that should, is gonna be used as a caretaker for the, um, the nursery? Or, or is the single-family home a, a, another primary use? I, I, I guess there's just a lot of confusion with what they're asking. If, if they want the commercial for the commercial, uh, nursery, uh, staff definitely recommends approval for that because it's in conformance with your general plan, which shows commercial in that area. So we would recommend approval for the commercial component. And if they want to keep the house as a caretaker house, then we would recommend approval for that as well, because that's all contained, uh, in the allowable permitted uses in the CL. But when you add that second home in there, it changes the entire, the entire makeup of the property.
So to make a short answer, we can't do this legally?
Um, I'll turn that over to the, uh, the attorney and let him answer that.
And that's the equivalent of pulling the pen on the grenade and throwing it in the middle of the room. Mayor, members of the council, there actually are a few things we probably would want to talk with, maybe definitely among staff and potentially with you all about this, these conditions. It might be wise to continue the conditional use permit portion of this so that we can have those discussions and.
I'd like a motion to table this to the next meeting so we can discuss it.
Mayor already have a motion on the floor.
To rescind that motion and a motion, I'd like a motion to.
Um, a motion to continue, we'll take precedence over the motion that's currently on the floor. If you're gonna continue it, please do it to a specific date so that we can continue the hearing as well.
Next meeting is April ninth, twenty nineteen.
Mayor? Just to be clear, though, the, the first seven A, that's done?
That's done.
There's the other zoning? And as far as staff is concerned, the no additional, the residence that's on there is an acceptable use on commercial light as a caretaker residence as it stands.
I think the, the major issue is the second residence, and I'd like to have that cleared up with your attorney and, uh, with our staff folks before this comes back next time.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move this to four nine to allow staff to work on it and get us answered.
Is there a second?
Just a quick question to that, is staff, is that enough time?
Uh, that should be enough time to meet with who, uh, with staff and work it out.
A second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you for clarification and coming and speaking. We'll work this out somewhere in there.
Vice Mayor.
Okay. Consideration, I, item C, consideration of possible action regarding the proposed modification to the town's tax code to increase the transaction privileged tax rate for manufactured home sales, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Two meetings ago, we, we talked to, I presented the information on the manufactured home sales tax, and at that time you directed staff to start the process.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, could you take your conversation to the hall, please?
Please, thank you.
You directed staff to start the process of changing our tax rate or reviewing the tax rate change. So, um, we have started that, and this, basically this action item, uh, adopts our notice of intent, basically tells the public that, hey, we're in the process of reviewing our manufactured home sales tax, and we're considering changing the rate of that tax. And we set a public hearing for May twenty-four, two thousand nineteen. And as part of that process, uh, staff has prepared a report, I emailed it out to you this morning. But, um, I did a little bit more analysis than the last presentation, and actually council member Mendoza, uh, talked to me and got me thinking about some other ways that we could actually present this data. So I'm not gonna go through the entire presentation, but I'd like to go to some of the, a little more analysis that I did. This quickly is just, uh, the schedule that we have, uh, tonight, setting that public hearing, for, and all the publications and all the steps that we have to do. The earliest this tax can be adopted is August first, or that's when it actually goes into effect. So, um, I'm gonna skip to like the last couple of slides. I did a little thing, some of the data that I did have is one, I had the gross sales from all the manufactured homes that were sold by manufactured home dealers in Chino Valley. And so I went back to two thousand fifteen, and I just took an average of a hundred thousand dollar home, trying to come up with the number of homes that were sold. I did talk to the manager of Clayton Homes, and I said, so what's your average sales price? And he goes, well, you know, seventy-seven to one-twenty, sometimes we have a two-hundred thousand dollar total land package. I said, what do you think of a hundred thousand? He goes, ah, close, I mean, you know, it's just an approximation. But what I was trying to do is figure out how many manufactured homes these dealers were selling, and just to, you know, just to do that quick analysis. So in fifteen, they had two, they had twenty-two, sixteen thirty-nine, seventeen sixty-six, and an eighteen a hundred and eight. So we've seen a growth in housing revenue throughout the town, we know that. And in seventeen is when we did our tax rate change. So then I looked, well, how many of those got placed in Chino Valley? Or how many manufactured homes were placed or built in Chino Valley? And in fifteen, we had fifty-five, sixteen sixty, forty, and thirty-one. So if you look at fifteen, basically what's, that's telling us is that thirty-three homes were purchased from dealers outside of Chino Valley and brought into Chino Valley. And those numbers are solid, those are the exact number of building permits that were issued. In sixteen, we had sixty homes that we placed in Chino Valley, but twenty-one of them came from outside Chino Valley, which we didn't collect the sales tax on. But in seventeen, after we changed the sales tax rate, that changes. So now they've sold sixty-six homes, we placed forty, but twenty-six of them were sold and placed outside of Chino Valley. So we received the tax, but the home was placed, you know, somewhere else in the state. And in eighteen, we had seventy-seven. Now, this is just an estimate, understand my weakness here is I don't know the exact average sales price each fiscal year. But if you look at that graphically, you can see that by changing, reducing the sales tax, there's a strong argument that says that made our manufactured home dealers in Chino Valley more competitive in the area, and they sold more homes. And we know for a fact they sold more than were placed just here in town, but to outside dealers. Now, that's not saying that some of the homes placed here were, were, were purchased somewhere else and brought in. But ju, and if they were, then that makes our, our dealers even a little stronger, so. For that reason, I can confidently say it helped that industry do better and be more competitive. I can't tell you the exact amount because the other thing that affected this number is our growth in housing, and we have seen a significant ramp up in all of our construction activity. But for food for thought, I just wanted to present this to council and let you debate it. You know, I'm limited on the amount of data that I have, but just looking at it a little bit different way, and that's where council member Mendoza sort of clued me off, it's like, eh, think about this a little harder. This is what I, I hope this is what you were trying to ask me to come with. So with that, um, the decision tonight is, do we set a public hearing? And then do we continue with this process and, and move down the road to eat, to potentially increase our rate from two percent up to four percent? And that, of course, is at your discretion also.
This side, questions?
Joe, do you, can you relate that out to dollars?
Uh, yes, I can. Uh, this isn't gonna let me go back real quick. Well, in sales tax dollars alone, in sixteen and seventeen, we're about flat. This is our, the collection, and then, of course, you can see the big increase from seventeen to eighteen, from a hundred and forty-eight to two fifteen. In gross sales, though, that's the difference right there. So in seventeen, we did six and a half million dollars. And you see, it's up almost about half of sixteen, so that's why the rate stayed flat. So in sixteen, at four percent, we did three point eight million dollars in sales, or all the dealers combined. In seventeen, they did six and a half million, and in eighteen, they did ten million dollars in sales. Again, there's two factors, the reduced tax rate and the growth in the, in the growth.
You know, I, I, I'm, don't agree with reducing the tax rate. Even though it's making money for the town, I still am at that. I think it should be same for everybody, um, whether you have hamburgers or heart dogs, it should be the same tax, so. That's where I'm at.
This side.
Well, I look at this completely objectively, you know, from a financial point for the town. Since we cut the sales tax in half, they would have needed to double their sales to break even. Which in the first year, from twenty sixteen to twenty-seven, they didn't quite double their sales. But in twenty eighteen, they've tripled their sales, or not quite tripled, but more than doubled between twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. So I would say, as far as what your question is, uh, yes, we told the people that we would reevaluate this after a period of time when we did have statistics. And again, I'm going off the statistics, not emotion. And, and to me, that, you know, just because somebody else happened to get ice cream, you know, be happy that they got ice cream, so. But I do think we need to review it and actually make a vote on it at a later meeting to see whether we want to continue this or whether to pull it back.
I agree with council member Mendoza.
I think we're, they're showing that they're selling more, whether the homes are going here or going someplace else. And I fought with the sales tax at the point of buying for a lot of things, for propane and everything else, people went someplace else because they had a lower tax base. So now we have a lower tax base, we're coming here to buy.
So if we, which direction we go, we are going to either process, go with the open meetings and things in the future, and then we will, it will come back to us to make a decision one way or another after we hear more input. So, what's your, what's your pleasure?
I would personally like to table this until our April ninth meeting also, now that we have statistics in front of us to study.
What's purpose of ta, of tabling it till we have more information?
Because we have the statistics in front of us, whereas we didn't before.
I don't think that's under. Okay, we have a recommended action. Attorney, can we table this and continue legally?
Um, mayor, is this, isn't it really a public hearing item yet? You can continue it in, in any way you want. You can continue indefinitely to a specific date or however you want to do it.
You wanna, you wanna table it to the next, to the April ninth meeting?
Yeah, I, I agree, we just got this information, so it'd be nice to be able to digest it and everybody come back to the next meeting with a clear head on exactly which way they want to go.
And it would be an action item at that time?
No, it'll, it'll just be setting the date for the public hearing. We'll still have to do the, the timing.
It would either be. I'm skipping a step there.
Yeah.
Or not doing it.
We're gonna, we gotta do all this first. Thank you, Jimmy.
Okay, we're gonna.
This is, this is the timeline, and tonight, basically, it just sets the public hearing date in, in May. And, um, so we, and, but we have to post it and do all the publication to let everybody know that that public hearing's coming, including like the ADOR and all that stuff, so.
So you're gonna have to adjust your schedule?
Right.
Yeah, so we'll just adjust the schedule.
Okay.
Which is fine, I mean, it's your, your call, sir.
So the motion is to continue this item until the April ninth, two, twenty nineteen meeting, for further.
I'll second it.
Who, who made the motion, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who made the motion, please, was it, was it councilman?
I made the motion.
Thank you.
I shouldn't, but I did.
Did it so well.
You did, did a good job.
I remember doing that. Okay, let's go on to, any other discussion? Let's go on to eight, executive session. Council may vote to recess the regular meeting, hold an executive session which will not be open to the public for the following purpose. An executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one three A four for discussion or consultation with the town attorney in order to consider the town's position and instruct the town attorney regarding the town's position.
Oh, towns are.
Out of town. Regarding an interim government agreeing with the city of Prescott. Motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we adjourn to executive session?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We, motion carries, we're in the, we will go into executive session. We'll take five minutes break. We have no choice.
She's going on high speed.
Of all the nights, I'm not wearing my microphone. Oh, hell, well.
That doesn't work.
Do you have any sticker badges?
While we were trying to make it once a month, we were.
Oh, wow. Bye, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Oh, she did give me a sticker badge.
We're back.
Are we on for?
Yes. Spencer's there.
We are, uh, out of executive session. We discussed a water item with our attorney, and I need a motion, and no action was taken. We have given the attorney direction, he will come back to us later, and I need.
You're up, Lon.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Yes, sir.